I don't know what I'm doing either. At this time, please silence your cell phone and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded for those physically present in the council chamber who deserve, who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chambers presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at appropriate time and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order a regular meeting, the city council on Tuesday, September 23rd at 6:00 PM. The invocation will be given by Ezekiel Gaidis?
Gaidis.
Gaidis, okay. Well, I had to get a lesson here from Living Word Church. And Council Marallo will be doing the pledge of allegiance, so please stand and join me.
Amen. As we all bow our heads, Father God, we come before you in this place of meeting. God, I pray a blessing upon each one of your laborers, God, as they work for the city, God, to keep order, to keep safety, God, to keep it protected. Lord, I pray that you give them your heavenly insight, that you pour out your wisdom upon each one of them, God, that you pour out a fresh anointing, God, your power. I pray that you move within them, God, that you begin to put things in their heart, God, direction, strategy, insight, God. Let them multiply, let them be blessed. Let many laborers come to this city, God, looking to help, God, looking to volunteer. Lord, I pray that you bring in all the help that they need, all the finances they need, Lord. Let them not lack in any area, God, but I pray, Lord, that your provision goes before them, God, that you set your angels around all your laborers, God, that you protect each one of them and each one of their family members, God, each one of the schools around here, every child, God, I pray that you protect their innocence, God, that you put into place, God, those that you want, for you know what you're doing, God, for you know what is good and what is right, God. We give you all the authority, all the honor and all the praise in this place. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Before we say the pledge, I just want, I have to tell you this really quick. This is an extra special pledge of allegiance to me personally, because yesterday my oldest daughter took the oath of citizenship to the United States of America. And so...
So congratulations to my daughter Rebecca on being the newest U.S. citizen in Grand Terrace.
Thank you, brother, for that beautiful prayer. And congratulations, Jeff, to your daughter becoming a citizen of the greatest country in the world. So, no A B 2449 now, and since, uh, city clerk, can we do roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Sabino?
Here.
Mayor Hussey?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. So, item A, reordering additions or removal of the items on the agenda.
Yeah, we're going to pull four, bring it back on December 15th. We have some new information I think will bear on this and from a couple, item number four.
Pull on item four, and then we'll go ahead on the new business for G. We'll move M through R under F. So after the unfinished business, we'll go ahead and do the housing authority, then we'll, then we'll go into our closed session. All right, Daisy, you got that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, public comment, this is opportunity for members of the public to comment any item not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained by California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarifications. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff if questions arise during the public comment or may request the matter be agendized for a future meeting. Is there any public comment?
No, sir.
You made me say all that?
Yes.
Okay, you gotta look, at least move your head when you say, so I'll cut it out. You just wanted to hear my voice, huh? You missed me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Special presentation, non-consent calendar, the following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. We act upon the city council any one time without discussion. A council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the item from the consent calendar for discussion. Is there any public on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve a consent calendar and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Attorney, do you have anything to add?
Not on this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, public hearing, item E9, F unfinished business now. We're pulling G for item four, so we're going to go ahead and go into the housing authority. Wait, did you roll call again?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So, just for the record, so we are going to recess the regular meeting of the city council for a little bit. We'll open up the housing authority portion of the meeting and then come back to the city council.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and recess the regular council meeting and we'll go ahead, open up the housing authority. At this time, please silence your cell phones. These proceedings will be recorded for those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the Board of Grand Terrace Housing Authority. During the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present will be called upon at appropriate time and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Board of Grand Terrace Housing Authority to order on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, at 6:07. Madam City Clerk, can I roll call again, please?
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Board Member Allen?
Here.
Board Member Wilson?
Here.
Vice Chair Sabino?
Present.
Chairman Hussey?
Present.
Chair, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Public comment, this is opportunity for members of the public to comment any item on the agenda only. At the special meeting of the Board of Grand Terrace Housing Authority, pursuant to California law, the Board of Grand Terrace Housing Authority will only be taking public comment on the items listed on the agenda. Is there any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, item P, consent calendar, five approval of minutes for a special meeting. Do I have a...
Motion to approve.
Second.
City Attorney, you have anything for item P for the consent counter?
I do not.
Okay, we have a, I want you to walk out first and get you to come back, get your steps in. Oh, wait, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. New business. Deed of trustee recorded for July 2nd, 2003 regarding the property located at 22565 Franklin Street in Grand Terrace.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Tonight, I am going to be presenting on 22565 Franklin Street. I did brief the board at the last meeting, but I'm going to go over it again and respond to some of the questions that were presented at the last meeting. So, as a background, Michelle Bustet received a non-interest bearing loan in the amount of $44,000 secured by a deed of trust as part of an assistance program under the redevelopment agency at that point in time. It was to purchase a single-family home at 22565 Franklin Street. Although the loan did not bear interest or require monthly payments, it did provide two mechanisms for payback. The first one was it would provide that the entire principal balance would be required to be paid back. But secondly, there would be an equity share. Basically, a portion of the equity that's earned would need to be paid to the redevelopment agency in the amount of 22.336%. And it would be due upon sale or upon the refinance of the property. At this time, the borrower would like to refinance the property, and due to debt resulting from some personal matters, the borrower cannot qualify for an amount which satisfied the requirement of the full principal amount along with the full equity share payment. So, a quick background on the history of this. So, it was originally, the loan was originally approved by the redevelopment agency, and in 2012, it was conveyed to the Grand Terrace Housing Authority, and we have confirmed all the documentation to support that. In 2019, Ms. Bustet transferred title of the property into an inter vivos family trust with her spouse, and he became the sole trustee upon her passing. So, a few options for you tonight to consider, and then I'll go through some of the questions that were presented at the last meeting. First, the board can accept full payment of the principal balance of the $44,000. The real issue before the board is how much of the equity share payment should we require? We can request the full amount of the 83313, or we can request some portion of that, where the family would pay a portion of the equity share and the remaining portion would basically stay as a loan to be paid back at a future date. So, with option two, the board may consider amending the loan to accept the immediate repayment of the principal balance and to modify the loan documents to allow payment of only a portion of it to avoid jeopardizing the loan of the equity share. The third is the board may accept immediate payment of the principal balance and modify the loan documents to allow the entire equity share payment to be secured by the deed of trust. In other words, not collect any of the equity share at this time. So, some questions that were presented at the last meeting, I will answer now. Will the alta loan title insurance policy protect against the destruction of the property or bankruptcy? No. The alta loan title is only to ensure that the new deed of trust is valid and is in second lien position as intended with the original loan. Second, how will the deed of trust secure the remaining balance of the equity share payment to be restructured? The title officer who we've discussed the matter with has requested that the housing authority release the original deed of trust that's been on the property and record a new one in its place. The title policy will ensure that the housing authority remains in second lien position, subject only to the senior trustee. Lastly, if the executive director is delegated authority to collect a portion of the equity share payment, what amount would be recommended? If the board elects to support to refinance the loan, the housing authority can require a partial payment of to $50,500 without jeopardizing the refinance loan, and that is because they want to ensure that they have enough money to pay for the HVAC unit for the property. Another question, why consider allowing the current borrower to use proceeds for unsecured debt and replacement of the HVAC? That was a question presented by Board Member Wilson. He's not here, but I'll go ahead and answer it anyway. That's totally a policy question. That's, that's not really a legal issue. It's more of, does the housing authority board want to be able to allow people to take money out of their home through the equity share, reinvest it back in, and continue with the loan? That's totally a policy question for the board. So, again, recommendations, we can, we're recommending at a minimum, accept the immediate payoff of the principal amount of $44,000. We think that's, that should be fair to get the loan paid back. With respect to the portion of the equity share to be paid back, again, that's left to the board as to what ratio should be provided. Again, the cap would be $50,500 to ensure that, that she has enough money to pay for the HVAC, again, if that is the policy determination of the board. And then, again, we could prepare the loan documents, we just need the direction of the board. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions, additional questions? Okay, well, I do, since I wasn't here. So, I remember when interest rates were almost zero, a couple percent, and we have some of the same residents come by and they wanted to refinance their homes. And the council at that time said, well, you have to pay off your interest-free loans. And we didn't approve it because they didn't want to pay it off. So, pretty much, we told them, no. And I don't know what happened to that. So, that's one thing we've got to think about. We're going to go ahead and change the way we're thinking now? I mean, when did the city become a banking institution, you know, with all this other stuff under us? Another thing is, Michelle took the loan out, correct?
Yes.
She wasn't married to Robert at the time, when she took the loan?
I do not know that for sure.
Well, they're shaking their head, yes.
I...
Okay, so how come Michelle just took the loan out and it wasn't a joint? Because then again, I'm looking at, she was the borrower, how are we transferring the loan to Robert when she was the one that signed the agreement? I thought we had procedures where we couldn't do that, because basically now you're, you gave somebody else the same loan that she agreed on. So now that if you gave somebody that loan, that loan's no longer valid. Am I wrong on that point?
I'd have to look at the loan documents specifically for that to see if that was the case, and we can definitely look at that.
Because, because the loans were given for people that fell under a certain income.
Correct.
I mean, actually, it was a better loan than I had at the VA, and I know a lot of people did. And I also know some people that shouldn't have got it, you know, knowing all the history of this. So, why did Michelle just take that loan and not Robert, being the co-signer at the time? And then, how did Robert become going to take over the loan when it was actually never brought forward, just in a trust? So, is his name on the loan document to take over this loan?
Yeah, I do not believe so. But we can take a look to see if through the trust that changed circumstances. But this was the information that we provided, so, but again, we can double check to see if there's any issues with that.
Yeah, because I don't, nothing's saying, you know, like I said, I'm not in here for the loan business, but what's Robert's credit rating? I mean, they're doing all this stuff, but how are we getting involved in all this when basically all this was told when these, when Michelle signed this original loan, if she ever did anything, everything was going to be paid off for the city, plain and simple.
Sure.
I don't, what's the statute of limitations, what they were supposed to be with the house where they didn't have to pay anything off? Do you know that?
Well, as long as they lived at the house, I think they didn't have to pay anything until there was a transfer of the property.
Until they actually sold it or transferred it.
Correct, that's correct.
So, my question is, do we know that Robert's okay, is beyond his document to request this, even though he's a trustee? Was he approved for the city-based loan on his income? That's, that's what I'm looking at, because this is the ADA guideline, and we got stuck with it now, and it was made for this certain group of people who fell under a certain income.
Correct. No, I agree with that point. We can double check on the, on the transfer in 2019 and see if it was, how it was documented specifically, to see if, again, it was through the trust or if there was documents provided to staff.
I don't know if a trust automatically takes over a loan.
True.
And, and then, it was signed on the promissory note, if anything was changed, it was to pay off this whole thing, not to, you know, 20 years later to change everything around. Because if we do that, we're, we're going to open up a whole Pandora box and everybody else wanted to refinance and do everything. I mean, how many more, city manager, do you know how many more of these loans we have out?
Less than 10. Somewhere between, I think it's eight, if I remember.
Were you here when it was brought up before about trying to refinance, or were you, were you not on Grand Terrace yet?
No, I wasn't here for that.
Because the interest rates are really low and people wanted to refinance, and they couldn't pay it off, so that was the whole thing.
I was, I was not here for that, although at my former place, it was an issue as well.
So, yeah, so it's a big issue. So, what, what, what do we do? I mean, we had to make sure that he was okay for the loan, even though he was a trustee. It was on the promissory note that everything was paid off. I mean, the house, I mean, it's doubled in price what he's getting for. I don't know, why can't it be paid off?
Right, and maybe...
And then we'd be out of it. I don't want to be in this loan business.
Yeah, I would say...
Because how much does it cost them for the attorney fees for all this?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, to go and work this up, I agree. But, but I will say this, I think I would recommend we proceed in two steps. The first step is, from a policy standpoint, do we even want to allow this type of transaction to go forward, or do we just want to basically call the loan and require a full payment of the, the principal and the equity share as contemplated in the loan? Or not? I think, not speaking for Board Member Wilson, but he was asking that same question at the last meeting, which is, you know, when did we become, I think, when did we become a bank, is what he asked. So, I think that question should be asked and answered by the board, if that's something we even want to entertain. Because if it's not, then we can just stop here. We can work with the, with the property owner to get the loan fully paid back with the equity share. If there is a desire to move forward with some balance, then we can do a little more homework, confirm the appropriate transfer, and then bring that back for confirmation with the board, and then whatever direction you want to provide in terms of the ratio between how much they're required to pay at this time in, in respect to the equity share versus the amount that they're going to be able to keep as a loan.
Well, I know I read that he stated that he's going to refinance in two years. So, what do we do in two years? We're back to the drawing board again?
Yes.
And if he does refinance in two years? I don't know what the economy's going to guarantee in two years.
It would be whatever remaining portion of the equity share, because in, in our recommendation, it would be, we'd be getting the principal loan back now. So, it'd only be remaining portion of the equity share.
So, let me ask you a question, City Attorney. How much does this cost in the city of Grand Terrace just to do all this legal stuff?
I couldn't, I, about $4,000, $5,000 bucks, somewhere there, maybe less.
And if it was written and writing on the promissory note that the loan would be paid off, it'd be plain and simple?
Correct.
Does the board have any other questions, concerns? Councilmember Allen, I mean, Board Member Allen?
So, do you want to have him bring it back at the next meeting with the answers to your questions and your concerns?
Well, I don't know how, what's the time limit on him's trying to get this loan and what's he's trying to do. I mean, if, I don't mind, Robert, is this Robert? I don't mind Robert coming up and answering some questions if it's all right with the board. Is it all right?
It's fine with me, sure.
All right. Do you want to answer some questions, Robert? Come on. First of all, let me say I'm sorry for passing of your wife, but...
Actually, I'm sorry, let me clarify. My name is actually Thomas Anderson. I'm actually here on behalf of Robert and his family.
We're sorry for Robert's wife passing.
Appreciate that. I'll pass that along, thank you. Like I said, my name is Tommy Anderson. I'm a personal family friend of the Busteds for over 16 years. I'm also, in this case, their lender, so I can hopefully maybe shed some light on the loan aspect of it as well. So, as you know, Michelle Bustet was also a city of Grand Terrace employee back when she took this loan back in 2003. The reason for Robert not being on the loan at that time, I believe he wasn't actually employed. That might be, it might have been in-between jobs, so it might have been a qualification standpoint, so that might have hopefully answered that question. And, so anyway, so basically, after Michelle passed away, to pay for the huge medical bills that were left behind, Robert took out a second mortgage from another lender. In doing so, that put the city's second lien position over to third. Fast forward to last year, Mr. Bustet actually had some medical issues of his own, which included some heart complications that required two stents. That obviously took a toll on his employment. He's still employed, but obviously had time off of work, so he got behind on some bills, and obviously that affected his credit rating. So, fast forward to today, he'd like to refinance his home to pay off, obviously, his debt. Unfortunately, due to his credit score, he only qualifies up to 50% of the property's value in loan amount. So, that would include, that would, that this is why we're kind of here and trying to negotiate this subordination. That, that's enough money to pay off his current first, the current second, the personal bills that he had lined up, and then the $44,000 originally back to the city, but it's not enough to satisfy the equity share. So, we request that the city accept the $44,000 of the, of the initial loan amount and subordinate the equity shares so he can, you know, pay it off and still be in his home. He would pay that off basically when he refinanced the first trustee down the road in a couple of years, or if he were to sell the property. As you mentioned, the interest rates, the interest rate on his current first is very attractive. The interest rate on his current second is not. And the interest rate on this loan that's wrapping them both up isn't the best interest rate either, so it's not a loan that he would actually need to or want to keep for more than two or three years. And once that credit rating gets back to where it used to be before last year, then he could refinance into a more favorable, favorable position, increase the loan amount, and then at that point, paying off the city's equity share of 22.5%. So, my, you know, my opinion, this would be beneficial for all the parties involved. It would allow a 20-plus-year resident of the city to get back on his feet financially. It would also return $44,000 to the city. The equity share would remain in place and most likely be worth a bit more as values continue to increase. It would also move the city's lien position from third down to second, and it would still approximately be about $305,000 worth of equity in the property.
Okay, how about a time limit on this second?
I mean, as far as the, the way the deed was written initially, the only time limit on it is if he refinances the first or if he sells the property. So, there's no actual time limit. If you wanted to set one, if that would be part of the conditions for approving the subordination, I guess that's something we could address, but, I mean, that would be, you know, I guess, kind of up to, up to his financial situation and, and obviously the equity position of the property at the time.
All right. So, we're going to be moving up to the second position from the third position?
If this were to go through and the subordination where they happen, correct.
So, bankruptcy happened, we still get our money?
Correct. And like I said, he's got $300,000 of equity in the property, so I don't think he's going anywhere. He wouldn't want to walk away from that. We're talking about a hard working, blue collar worker, who's, a lot of his, you know, future is tied up in this house financially. So, for the sake of, you know, taking cash out of this house now to pay off some, some debt, some higher interest rate debt, I can't see a situation where he would just walk away from that remaining equity.
And you're saying that he wasn't originally borrowing the loan because he was in-between jobs?
I believe that's kind of, yeah, I mean, it was obviously 22, 23 years ago at this point, so I mean, it's obviously hard to get the exact details, but I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Councilmember Allen, Board Member Allen?
So, do I understand, if I understand what you said correctly also, sir, and thanks for coming in and helping us out here.
Sure.
Mr. Bissard plans on redoing a whole nother refinance in 24 months, is that correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, providing, you know, obviously, if it is, I mean, that all depends on, I say 24 months, that's a lender kind of requirement, that if he stays on track with his mortgage, obviously, if there's no financial, if there's no health, you know, issues that create another financial hardship. And let's say, for instance, yes, he stays on track financially, gets all the mortgage payments paid, and all the other debts paid off, so there's no lates on that. If we have a 24, you know, approximate 24, 36 months of, you know, a good solid, solid payment history, we would then be able to refinance, and, and instead of being limited to 50% of the equity of the property, he could actually increase that loan amount to, say, 60, 65, 70, in order to satisfy the equity share. And then that would be, you know, if everything, I don't have a crystal ball, I gave it, reading the crystal ball years ago, but if, if interest rates continue to remain the same or, you know, trend down a bit, it would obviously be a lot more favorable for him to refinance from that perspective, from that perspective alone, because the rate that he's getting now, obviously because of his credit rating, isn't the best. So, it's not, it's not a loan he wants to keep forever. So, he would, in fact, have to refinance that first, and then, obviously, that would, that would come with the necessity to pay off the city.
Thank you.
Board Member Brown?
Yeah, Conrad, does the, do you know, I should say, does the housing agency get to keep the proceeds from the loan, or do those get passed on to the successor agency?
They would stay with the housing agency.
Okay, and that's including the equity amount?
Yes, because it was the agency generated, so then it would...
Okay, so we're not going to, we would not lose those...
Not go into general fund.
Those loan proceeds would not go to the successor agency, it would be distributed to the taxing entities.
Those, that's all closed.
Yeah, Board Member Brown, the successor agency was dissolved about three years ago, two, three years ago.
Right, I know that there was some reporting that was ongoing, and I was just curious about the process. I'd like to see, obviously, the money stay with the city.
It will not be general fund, it'll be housing authority, but it will stay with the city, yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Conrad, if we were to open up and do this for Robert, we're probably going to have others come that want to refinance when it's going down. We're going to have to probably set a standard for this, same thing, pay off the promissory note?
I don't necessarily have to set a standard. I mean, this is a unique set of circumstances that I guess if there's somebody else that comes in who's had medical issues and has to pay for a medical...
Well, like I said, I just know when the interest were down to 2%, and we had a couple people wanting to do it, but they didn't want to pay off the promissory.
We, we had a rush of those, yes, trying to refinance. But I, I think we can make an argument that this is a unique situation, and we don't have to open the door to those remaining loans.
But if they did want to pay off that note, they could refi- But if they did wanna pay off that note, they could refinance.
We would, we would be glad to take their money.
Cuz we'll be out of it.
In in a perfect world, there'd be seven or eight more guys standing behind you trying to close these loans and we could be out of this business.
Uh Board Member Allen? Are you, go ahead.
Um I'm I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Um to move staff recommendation. Um it's really long, but the, you know, the what they're recommending.
Okay, I'll second that motion cuz I wanna, you know, he has been a longtime Grand Terrace resident and. This is uh treading water that we haven't been here before. And hopefully um this will help this Grand Terrace resident get back on his feet, but um also pay back the taxpayers some money that was theirs. From this RDA, so I'll second.
Mister Chair and uh Board Member Allen, can you clarify, so I think there's two pieces. Number one is. And maybe I could take a straw poll. Are we requesting that he pay back the principal amount of forty-four thousand in full?
That the, the way Mr. Tom, the way you explained it was actually one of the staff recommendations.
Yes.
And that's the one that I chose.
Okay, and then with respect to the equity portion, um how much are we requesting be paid back at this time and then remain outstanding? So I believe.
Wasn't the staff recommendation fifty?
Fifty thousand, five hundred to be paid to the current owner to pay off other secured debt, so I think when we were.
But is 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 requiring that portion of the equity share. Let me ask you something, Tom. Was that, was that in what you're in your offer to pay back a portion of the equity share?
No, that was, that was not. We were requesting to subordinate the entire equity share.
Okay, yeah.
Um so he could pay off, use the extra funds to pay off um the debt that he was, that he incurred last year when he was sick.
Mm-hmm. That was the, that's the staff recommendation that I read here that I was going for and was to have the entire equity share portion subordinated again. And we just, and the city just recovered that, or the Housing Authority recovered the principal amount of forty-four thousand.
Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes.
Okay, and Chair, your second?
Yeah, I don't wanna put him back in further debt, so let's do that and um. So we're gonna be making interest off this remaining.
Correct, so the equity share, we will still earn interest off of that.
So, one last question. Now I don't want this to happen to him. But if God calls Robert's home and this is a trust, who's this house going to? Is he the only sole person for this house or does he have family?
I mean, he has heirs, but that's, he's the sole heir to the trust. He's the sole beneficiary of the trust, correct?
So as long as it's on the escrow and the docs saying we we hold a second on this, right?
Correct.
Second position, okay.
And and I will note, so the board direction, I will also again look at that one issue just to confirm that proper ownership. If there is an issue with that, I will bring this back.
Okay.
But, okay, um with that, I will note, is the public comment closed for the item?
Is there any, yeah, public comment?
Um we just had Mr. Anderson, but if he has nothing else to add.
No, okay. We'll close public comment, so.
Just a moment, just a moment.
Oh, he has something else?
Sorry, I apologize. So um yeah, so in in obviously going forward and picking up, picking up the pieces of his life, Mr. Boosted did get married a year and a half ago. Um so that's obviously, he's obviously married now, but if you wanted to, if there was a way that you could say that if he passes first. That the equity share, if not paid off by then, gets paid off in full, that would be something that they would be more than willing to consider.
City Attorney, what do you think on that?
It makes sense if we can do it legally, we can do it. I have to check with my real estate colleague just to confirm that.
You're doing all this pro bono?
As always.
Yeah, if that needs, if that needs to be added, Mayor, to the, to my motion, I will, I would add something like that, if you wanna include that.
Okay.
Mister City Attorney.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay. Thank you, with that.
Do you have anything else to add? Before we make, before we vote?
I do not.
So we could vote now?
Mister Mayor, I'd like the entire motion restated for the record.
Yes.
So the motion would be to um number one, require that the full amount of the principal of forty-four thousand be repaid, number one. Number two, that at this time, no equity uh share payment will be required. That will be remain uh will remain as a second lien position. Um and a new trustee will be um adopted for that purpose. And then the third piece was ensuring that if there is a sale or transfer, that we would be paid first. And again, assuming, again legally, we can do that.
So everybody got it? Is that good?
Or refinance.
Or insurance payout from destruction of the property for whatever reason.
I'll I'll add it, and again legally, I just have to double-check we could do it, but yes.
Thank you for explaining that. I um I'm really uncomfortable with the item. I I I think it's. It seems to me almost to be like a gift of public funds if we're sitting here subsidizing this loan to the tune of ten thousand dollars, at least in legal fees. When you add up what you're going to be charging us now and when the item comes back again, it seems like other residents shouldn't have to cover those costs for their neighbor. But that's just my opinion.
I would, with with respect to the gift of public funds for for purposes of the um the loan itself, again, we are being fully paid back. Um not only with the principal, but also with the equity share. So in terms of that, I I don't see a gift of public funds. In terms of my work and and my team's work on this, you know, again, that's, you know, doing city business, Housing Authority business. I I don't see it as a gift of public funds respectfully. Um we could ask um the the applicant to reimburse. The Housing Authority for the Housing Authority General Counsel's time. I mean, that's something that's done uh with other housing authorities. I don't know if you wanna ask him that?
That would be very reasonable. I think that it's important that the council knows that they're making that decision today, that they're committing to incurring these additional costs. And committing the residents to paying those costs.
Uh yeah, I think they would be open to to accepting those funds if they could be paid off through escrow. Um do we have an approximate amount of what they would be at this point?
Probably around five thousand, but I I'd have to, okay.
Five, okay, approximate, one or two of it. Okay, I mean, I think that would be reasonable. Yeah, it would be, yeah, that'd be fair.
Thank you.
So does that have to be added to that?
We will add it to the the resolution um for for uh inclusion, if that's acceptable to the board.
Does that answer your question, Board Member Brown?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alright. Any other else before we make, do a vote? Alright, we have a motion, a second, direction to the to the attorney, please vote.
Motion passes. Councilmember Wilson did vote no.
Alright.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Board.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn um Housing Authority meeting and we'll come back to. Item H, future agenda items. At this time, the city council may proceed items discussed and our action of future duly agenda city council meeting, their consequence of the majority of the quorum required to place. Do you guys have any future agenda items you wanna request? None? Alright, City Council Communications, Councilmember Brown.
Well, um I will say that I had the opportunity to uh attend the State of the County while you were out on the cruise, Mister Mayor, and it was.
I didn't get to go fishing like.
It was, it was a fantastic opportunity to to, you know, network with some of our county partners uh on the law enforcement, county fireside. And and a lot of the agencies that support the work that we do here in Grand Terrace on behalf of our residents, so it was definitely time well spent. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. So. I attended the. San Bernardino County, you know, I'm a member of the Veterans Advisory Committee to the Board of Supervisors, and so I attended that meeting. Such a couple of quick things that you might find interesting. Uh legislative update here is. AB fifty-three, which uh Assemblymember Ramos had. It was his bill. It's the twenty thousand dollar income tax exemption for veterans. That's um, it effectively died, but this is a unique situation. It's really weird. It it died, but it was written into the uh budget, so it was included in this year's budget, even though, and it died. So for this year and this year only, veterans get twenty percent, um first twenty thousand is, they can, you know, claim this deduction. Now, if he, if they bring it back next year, that'll, and it passes, it'll extend for ten years. AB two ninety-six passed in the assembly but died in the senate. SB six ninety-four passed in the senate, but it died in a, in committee. And that's a unique one. That's the Claim Sharks Bill. You ever heard of that? You know who Claim Sharks are? Those are the folks that advert, that they they take vets' money to file their claims for them. Yeah. Right, and and, you know, we're going to the service officers who do it for free, you know, for as a service. And uh and they take portions of their retirement pay for life and stuff like that and make them sign these legal documents, and it's really, they are sharks, and so. Um hopefully that comes back again next year. Also, something else we found out about, the Semper Fi and Americas Fund were awarded federal money to support veterans with housing insecurity. These organizations assist veterans with becoming current with their rent or utilities. So if you know um any of, any veterans in need of these services, you can refer them to the San Bernardino County Departments of Veterans Affairs. They've already um referred several veterans to these organizations who, and those veterans received their, the help that they offered. Also, the County Office of Homeless Services is planning to install kiosks around the county in different areas to connect community members with county services. You know, it's like a one-stop shop right there at the kiosk, whatever, you know, you need to do. And uh so they're, right now, they're looking at how these can be used to connect veterans with the services in their community, but also with all the other county departments. Couple of uh. Today was the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the uh Arrowhead United Way. For the National Veterans Chamber of Commerce. And this will serve as a hub where veterans can access a wide range of service and support and and also. Um this is an expansion of the uh Arrowhead United Way's Brave Initiative, which was launched last year. Aims to empower veterans by providing them with an array of services, including housing and employment, business and education and opportunities and workshops. So, you know, on November eleven is Veterans Day, and from November four through eleven, I know we'll have a couple of council meetings before then, I could talk about this. But on November four through eleven, all county buildings are gonna get lit up at night in the color green to honor veterans. Hey, Mister City Manager, do our lights at night have that capability changing color? Can we?
We, we would have to acquire filters or something.
Oh, okay, yeah. I don't know how they do it, but they're they're, so and and all folks, if y'all see all the, all the buildings in the county at night lit up in green during, in early November, you'll know why. That's what that's all about. Um AJ, were you able to get that on on there? Because one of the things that the Office of Homeless Services and and Veterans Affairs working together does, and I'm real proud of my work with them, is. We um work together with the, all these organizations to provide veterans stand-down in shelter courts. And if you've never seen one of these or been a part of one of these, it's quite a, quite an event. I don't know, Lieutenant, if you ever have. But throughout the county, we take, or or actually, the county takes the judge and the court to the park or to the location where the homeless services are needed. And they take care of minor infractions and, you know, citations, misdemeanors, and try to get things taken care of so that people have a, can get a leg up. And maybe get out of the the rut that they're in. And this is one of the things we also discussed yesterday. So on October eighth in Rialto City Park, from ten AM to two PM is a veteran's stand-down in shelter court. If you know any veterans out there in the community looking for any of these kind of services, be a great opportunity for them to go over there and they can connect with all these uh organizations who are there for them. Thanks, AJ, for doing that and and uh, Mayor, that's uh, that's all I've got, I think. Oh, one last thing I don't want anybody to forget about. This is all I've been talking about all week long. It's the American Cancer Society Relay for Life coming up on Saturday, folks, okay, and our team, the Grand Terrace Relay for Life team. We're still out there beating the bushes, trying to raise funds for this really worthy cause. So if anybody out there wants to be part of the team, just go to relayforlife.org. And where it says, "Support a team," you can type in Grand Terrace. You can support it in any way you choose. You can come out there and walk with us if you want, or you can donate money. That'll, that's what it's all about, raising money for support for research and into cancer cure. So Mayor's on the team. I wanna thank him a lot for hi- for his support. I know Councilmember Brown, thank you very much for joining the team and your support very much. And all the others out there who are listening, who also joined. Conrad, he he also did. Thank you very much. I know the Sheriff's Department's doing their part too. Thank you. We'll see you there on Saturday, uh Lieutenant, and and that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um did attend the State of the County as well as Councilman Brown did. But before that, there was the NAIOP, Commercial Real Estate Development Association. And it was a panel discussion, State of the Real Estate Market and Inland Empire Insights, Friends and Outlooks. Reshaping or shaping the inland empire. That's really why I went. That was the most important aspect of it, and the guest speakers were, or the panel of experts. Were Ian Britton from CBREES, the Senior Managing Director, Doug Harista, who's Harista Ma. Uh Senior Vice President of Land Advisors Organization. It was chaired by Terry Thompson, Director of Real Estate Services for all of San Bernardino County. Tom Peurich, Senior Vice President of Lee &amp; Associates. And above all, Randall Lewis, Senior Executive Vice Principal and Principal of Lewis Group of Companies. Each one of them spoke in relation to the shape of real estate and financing within the inland empire. Uh for the immediate future as well as uh what has led up to this condition. Uh right now, things are very tight in the finance market. And it does, you know, it is reflected in our uh ability to move forward. Uh not only to be able to to work with our developers, but also to be able to move forward on some of our projects. And uh did get a chance to have a in-depth conversation with Randall Lewis. He is considered a, an expert when it comes to residential uh housing. You're gonna see more uh apartments, you're gonna see more townhouses, uh duplexes. More creative uses in housing because they can only make the dollar stretch so far. And so uh I thought it was an excellent opportunity to gather together with these folks. And uh I'm really glad I attended. It gives us a necessary update to what we have in in store for us for the next year, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Well, I wanna thank the council and the Mayor Proten for taking over while I was gone. I was um. In South Carolina seeing my grandchildren, try to see them every three months at least, and they grow a lot in three months and. You know, it's never goodbye, it's see you later. But uh nice and green there and because of humidity, and then when you fly back, I'm like, what? Where's all the trees at when you come through, you know, what happened, you know, so. But it's beautiful, um but, you know, it's good to be home. And then I got to go on a cruise for my wife's class reunion. It's unfortunately, a lot of people backed out. I told her she graduated from Colton. I'm surprised since she had that many people graduate, so. It was a joke since I was full high, but it was nice. But, you know, the biggest take on that uh cruise was uh they honored the veterans. But it was nice, but, you know, the biggest take on that, um, cruise was, uh, they honored the veterans and the men and women in military, and, um... And, you know, they, they sung everybody's, you know, song. I didn't know the Space Force had a little song going on, you know, it was, it was the first time I heard that. But they asked if anybody wanted to say anything, and being how shy I am, I did say something, so. I did do a prayer for everybody there, and, you know, the men and women, and the families, and the ones who didn't make it back, and some are still fighting, you know, in harm's way, so that was a highlight of my cruise. Had a good time, relaxed, uh, didn't get off the ship, uh, just stayed there. I actually walked, I could say I walked from here to Mexico on that ship, so I walked on that track. Matt Brown told me there's a jogging track up there, so I was averaging fifteen miles a day, so I was doing pretty good. And, um, well, I had to do that because I ate a lot, so if you don't walk, it'd be like a hamster that doesn't eat so, have a little bit. I appreciate you guys doing and taking the will, but, you know, um, you know, when we do go visit family and, and people don't realize, it is a sacrifice being up here on the council. Sacrifice time and effort from your family, putting other priorities in perspective, you know, we, we're not doing this for the money. We do this because we love the city, and we want to take care of the residents, just like tonight, you know? We want Robert to still be in his home, and, um, but, you know, we, we do this because we have to fight the good fight to keep Grand Terrace whole, because all of us on here want the same thing. I want the same thing that I had for my kids growing up here, is a peaceful residential area where they could still walk at night. And the donkeys still could walk at night. But, you know, we appreciate, first of all, we appreciate you guys keeping it safe and doing the medical emergencies, and, you know, keeping, uh, everything running in orderly manner here, so, God bless you guys, so... But yeah, so, um, that's all I have on that, uh, but yeah, it was, I'm looking forward to the Relay to Life, and I'm glad Councilmember Brown's gonna be there, he's gonna be holding the umbrella so I won't get sunburned, and, uh, I'm gonna try to walk the whole time. What's the start?
Start, starts at nine AM, setups before that, and breakfast and all that, it starts, I think, seven thirty or eight, but for the, uh, team members, but the actual event starts at nine AM, goes till ten PM.
Well, that's gonna be my goal, to keep walking, I can do three miles in an hour. It's kind of boring to go all the circles, but, you know, we'll try. Anyway, uh, City Manager, do you have any communication?
Um, yeah, I wanted to, we brought up the question about airport noise last time, and I wanted to have a chance to talk to the airport, and there is a portal, if you, online, and we'll put it on the, on the fax here tomorrow morning, so that if there is airport noise, they have a Good Neighbor website where you can report the noise directly, and that will help measure what's going on and give us a better chance to have some real specifics. And then we are still setting up the meeting for our group to attend. Also, the airport is putting a community concert on the back end of the passenger terminal, October eighteenth. So, um, apparently, they're opening up the terminal, you go through baggage claim, out through the back of the airport, where all, where normal people aren't allowed to go, and they have a seven twenty-seven set up as a stage, and they'll have a big concert, we'll put that information on the fax as well. And that's, so it was, it was fortuitous that we reached out to them. And with that, Lieutenant, you got anything?
No, nothing really to report. Uh, we had a DUI enforcement operation here on Friday night, but we had some issues with our, our CAD system being able to run plates and things like that, the system went down at some point, but they were still able to stop almost thirty vehicles, no DUIs, arrests from that, which is good. So people were cooperating with the law, so, other than that, nothing to add. And then we'll have some more information that I'll get with, with you on, and for the December meeting in regards to that item.
Excellent. Chief, welcome back from the Great North.
I appreciate that, Conrad. Just one thing to report, um, I'm happy to announce that our roof project will start November thirteenth. Uh, we did put the blue tarps back up today, uh, because they blew off. We got through our process, and I am very proud to announce, I'm partially gonna be mad if it doesn't start November thirteenth, but I am proud to announce that our roof should be done here, along with the bay doors, in the next couple of months, so, sorry for the delay.
I don't know, you know, that thing was tip-top shaping, we sold it to you. I have no idea what's going on, what you guys did to that.
I partially don't agree with you, Mayor.
I mean, we're getting complaints about you not being a very good neighbor, you know, and just putting up tarps and everything else. So on that note, too, um, I know we had a, please be careful when you're driving around the neighborhoods and Barton Road, because our donkeys are out, we had another one get killed. They are hard to see, they blend in really well, but yeah, we don't want, um, I feel bad for the donkey, but we don't want somebody's life to be, you know, taken to because of that. So if you maintain the proper speed limit, you can maintain the proper stoppage on that thing, so, um, I think that's it. So we're gonna go ahead and reschedule the closed session. Our closed sessions be, uh, item one, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipating Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuit of Paragraph Two, Subdivision D of the Government Code, Section five four nine five six point nine, number of cases, one potential case. Two, Public Employee Performance Evaluation Pursuit of Section fifty-four ninety-five seven B one, Title City Manager. Number three, Public Employment Performance Evaluation Pursuit of Section fifty-four ninety-five seven B one, Title City Attorney. So if they don't come back, their evaluation's worth that good, so let me just tell you, we might be looking for other people, so, just a heads up. That's why I saw cookies in the break room, they're already trying to bribe us. Is that it? Okay, well, go ahead and close, close, uh, go to closed session. Uh, if we don't see you, um, thank you for coming out, thank you, young man, for your beautiful prayer, it was great, and thank you, everybody, for showing up, and God bless you all, and, and keep your family safe. Adjourn to closed session. Guys, ready? So we're back from a closed session, uh, so Attorney, you have anything you want to...
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. So we had three closed session items this evening. The first one was regarding the significant exposure to litigation for one case. Information was provided to the City Council, discussion was had, and direction was provided to staff. With respect to the other closed session items, those were performance evaluations for the positions of City Manager and City Attorney. For both, uh, performance evaluations were conducted and discussions were had, there was no reportable action. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay, congratulations on having a job for another year. So I want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight. And, um, our next regular City Council meeting will be held October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six PM. Any requests to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to City Clerk. That's it, good night.